Good evening. I'd like to open the meeting. Today is January 29th, where we have a special meeting here at the Haviland Middle School. At this time, we'll have the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I don't believe there are any agenda modifications, and I have a motion to ... so we don't have to do that, right? Sorry. Now, we need to adopt it. I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. And now, we are going to go into a board discussion on the Haviland heating updates. And Elliot, that's ...
We have some updated documents for the board. We'll distribute them. Pass over these along. This is an updated version of the PDF document we received this morning. Spreadsheet outlining in-house work that was performed. The second one that I'm handing out now is contractor work that is technically scheduled to complement the in-house projects.
Let's just like to say that the superintendent just called. She's delayed, but she will be here in a little bit.
There's two sheets, right? Yes. What you should have in front of you were two spreadsheets. They're both two pages a piece, I believe. They're both staple documents.
Elliot, do you have enough? If there's any person in the audience that might want to look at that?
I only have one extra copy of each, but I can hand them out if ...
No, that's fine.
You want to make extras? We can do that.
Okay. Don't make copies if nobody needs them.
Just want to go through the process since we met last week, and we've had a lot of activity since last board meeting last Thursday. I'll recap that as briefly as possible, and then get into some of the more nuts and bolts of what we're doing going forward. You know, first and foremost, our goal here is to mitigate and eliminate the impact of instruction that these temperature issues are causing, not just in the effect they're having day-to-day, but as far as how we plan and schedule our maintenance. We're trying to do things off-hours, after-hours, and on weekends as much as possible to not interfere with the instructional day. Anything that's done during the day is done in rooms that are not in use or in areas that we can access without interfering with the student population. We've been very busy. After last Thursday's board meeting, I had three board members volunteer to work with me last Friday. We spent probably six hours of the morning together, starting from very early in the day, walking through the entire heating system as it begins in this very room, all the way to the extreme ends of the A wing. Excuse me. I do appreciate the input that was provided. It was very, very valuable and informative to just help us fine-tune our approach as to which way we're going. And so, out of Friday's meeting, we decided and agreed collectively that there were some projects that needed to be addressed immediately, using my staff, the FNO staff, to get things repaired. Consider it the low-hanging fruit that we can do to help increase airflow or heat flow in certain rooms. Our goal was to get as many rooms back to Principal Shaw as possible to maintain his regular schedule of classes without having to move too many rooms. When we started this process at our coldest day, we had between 12 and 16 rooms that had to be relocated. After the work we did over the weekend and the processes that we've put into place since then, and I'll get into a little bit of that in detail in a moment, as of today, we had two rooms that weren't available for instruction at 6 o'clock this morning. So, we have made quite a bit of progress just in the things that we've been doing in the last week or so to make minor repairs to the system, but the system overall does need to be addressed, and we're planning that with the help of some outside contractors. So, what you'll see on the first sheet that I handed out is titled HMS Heating Repairs. This is in-house work. This is work that my staff has been doing and continues to do. This was shared with the board members as a Google Doc, so that any one of you can dial in on any day as we update it daily to see how much progress we're being made, what new projects are being added, and what items are being tagged as completed. As you can see, a considerable amount of straight time and overtime went into this in the last week. I'll give you some highlights. We put, since last week, we've put in approximately 65 man-hours into different processes, and these are really the cleaning and maintenance of our existing HVAC equipment. Before we start replacing things, we need to make sure that the stuff that we have is working properly, and that's making sure that we have sufficient water flow and sufficient airflow through the different parts of the system to the best that we can while we're waiting to replace major components in the system in the next couple of weeks. So, a lot of that work was done this past weekend with the help of my in-house custodians, as well as my maintenance staff. We were able to get a big chunk of that accomplished. We also identified on Friday's meeting that a considerable amount of equipment needs to be replaced, and these are hot-water coils in most of our air handling units. This room, in particular, is serviced by an air handler, which, to simplify, means hot water goes through a coil. That coil is heated by the hot water. The air is blown through that coil that blows into this room and warms the atmosphere. We have nine out of 12 coils being replaced. Those coils have been ordered by the district at a cost of $10,000. They will be installed by contractor, and the reason for that is to expedite the process. It takes about eight to 12 man-hours to install each of these coils. We're bringing in outside help to get it done as soon as possible. These coils were ordered last Friday. They are due to ship to the district Monday, February 10th. There's no way to expedite fabrication, as they're all custom units, but we have requested that they expedite shipping to get them to us in a matter of days as of February 10th. I've been in touch with the contractor, Ashley Mechanical, who, incidentally, did the boiler replacement in this building, as well as the main heat pipe supply capital work this past summer. The president of the company is very sympathetic to our needs. Him and I spoke at length about the scope of work required. Right now, we agree that certain things have to happen and will happen as one large-scale project. In addition to replacing the coils that we've already ordered, we will be replacing valves associated with that to control those coils. We're going to be adding in strainers at the beginning of each one of those coils, which is going to help us catch some of the stuff that's been knocked loose in our system, some of the sediment and the pollutants in the water. We're going to be replacing the old pipes that are corroded and collecting dirt and debris. We have two types of pipes in the system, steel pipes and copper pipes. The copper pipes are okay. They just need to be cleaned out. Cleaning out of our existing copper is part of the scope, as well as replacing our steel pipes with new copper lines that will further prevent corrosion going forward. In addition, and again, I'm referring to the two-page spreadsheet that was handed out to you, we're going to be installing pressure gauges and temperature gauges throughout the system to help us monitor where the water's flowing and what the temperatures are throughout, and air bleed devices, not just at the coils, but throughout the system at every vertical elevation change. Referring back to the action plan that was sent to you a couple of weeks ago, one of our engineering firms did note that when you change elevation in the pipe system, you're susceptible to bubbles and what they call air binding, where air creates blockages in the same way that debris does and prevents water flow. So, we're going to be putting in devices throughout the system, in addition to at the units, to prevent that going forward on an automatic basis. You know, maintenance is required to check up on them, but they will bleed out air as it's trapped in those areas. In speaking to Mr. Fink of Ashley Mechanical, he feels that if we can expedite the delivery on the coils which we have requested, the best time to do this work is, again, when the students are not in the building, which, incidentally, brings us to the President's Day weekend of February 13th through the 17th. So, given that the school will be empty for five days that weekend, Mr. Fink feels that with loading up the building with as much labor as he can muster, he can get here, get the coils and the pipe work replaced in an expeditious manner. We raised ...
All the valves, the whole thing?
The majority of the work would be done those five days. Any remaining work would be done after-hours thereafter. I did petition him to start earlier. However, he feels that it would not be economical, and it would not be wise on our part to start taking down pieces of a system that's in question right now and be able to guarantee that it's back online by the next morning. So, he'd like to get the majority of the work done while the building's empty. Seemingly reasonable, we will continue to do as much maintenance work as possible, both during the day, in the evenings, and on the weekends. I've ordered additional equipment to be able to calibrate sensors and thermostats, because once we get the system flowing, we want to make sure that it's being controlled properly. And so, the next step after we cleaned the coils, we cleaned out the lines to the best of our ability. We've bled the air to the best of our ability. We've checked motors. We've checked belts. We've checked all of the mechanical equipment that we can get our hands on. The next step for us would be the monitoring and sensor control equipment, which my staff will begin to do on the weekends going forward as soon as I get these updated kits in-house. So, that's pretty much the synopsis of what we've committed to. The estimated budget from Mr. Fink for the capital work of his installation and modification to our pipe systems is at $85,000, and that's noted on the spreadsheet that was handed to you. We've spent $10,053 on coils. We've committed approximately $570 to valves. So, exclusive of the in-house labor portion that's been conducted on an overtime basis, we are within our $100,000 emergency fund budget at this time.
When you talk about the sensors you're going to be monitoring, is that a remote monitoring, or is that going to be a visual monitoring by somebody in the building?
We have two types of controls in this building. You have digital sensors that are tied into our energy management system. You also have pneumatic thermostats, which are at the front end in the boiler room, controlled by the same system, but they operate locally in the rooms. Those thermostats have to be calibrated to read properly, and sometimes what we're experiencing is now that we're doing daily building checks, and I will touch on that in a moment in a little bit more detail, we're observing a temperature that we're reading manually in the room, and we're getting a thermostat reading that's sometimes five, sometimes seven or eight degrees off. So, the goal here is to make sure that, once we get the system working physically, that the devices that control it, that feed the information to it, are feeding accurate information. And just as a point of reference on that note, I have initiated an emergency protocol staffing adjustment that will take a permanent effect in the next couple of weeks and take us through the rest of the heating season at minimum. What that's allowing us to do is to allocate one custodian from each Haviland and FDR to come in at 4:30 a.m. to do a comprehensive building check. I've also brought my grounds crew in at 4:30 a.m. to do comprehensive building checks of all of the elementary schools. While this building has been the core of our concerns as far as heating complaints, we can't neglect our other buildings, and to initiate a protocol just for this building seemed unwise when we could be forward-thinking and take care of the entire district. And so, much in the way that we have to have advanced reporting to the superintendent to make a decision that would affect school openings, school delays, or possible cancellation of school for a day, I need that information in advance, and I've moved my staff up an hour and a half each day to provide me with that information and give me enough time to get it to the superintendent to make those decisions. Since we've been doing that, we've noticed a remarkable change in conditions at the school days' beginning, because we're able to get ahead of things that much faster.
Excuse me, Elliot?
Yes, sir.
First of all, you did a good job on the spreadsheets. I like this.
Thank you.
I don't like the price, but that's something different. Do you have temperature sensors through your alarm company?
We do not currently have tied into the alarm.
I think that's something you should add to your list.
Okay, absolutely.
Put them in strategic areas, and that surely would help.
Yep. Our boilers, once the tie-in is completed, the boilers themselves alarm, but we don't have temperature alarms as part of the system. I will find out how we can go about integrating it.
Are the boiler alarms on your security system, or just on your control system?
They're on the control system. So, we've talked about getting that on a call-out with the alarm monitoring company, but we can add in temperature sensors with a threshold, you know, anything that drops below.
Yeah, we did. One backed up the other when we ...
Okay. I'll add it to the scope here for when I talk to Ashley, and I'll take it up with our controls company, too, and see which one can address it faster.
Okay.
You spoke about the hydronic system, which obviously is a big issue. We're talking about water flow through the coils for the air handlers, et cetera. But since you brought it up, made me ask, or think to ask the question, what's the condition of the temperature control system? Because, you know, I know these old pneumatic systems, you know, leaks in the pneumatic lines, they're running all over the place, the temperature, you know, control air compressors in the boiler room, you got, like I said, you got lines running all over the place, not only coming from the thermostats, but going to control valves to make valves open and close. Has that been all reviewed, and is that system working as optimally as possible?
That's part of my next phase of what, for lack of a better term, we're calling blitzed preventative maintenance, and that's things that haven't been addressed in the past that need to immediately. And I'll give you an example. Violet Avenue, we calibrated a thermostat. In going to calibrate this thermostat, we found that there was a broken diaphragm. We checked the other side of it. There was a broken piece of the airline in the unit vent. So, getting my guys into a building to change 200 thermostats or calibrate them and service them will yield a lot of that evidence of other failures in the pneumatics. I don't have major system-wide failures right now in the pneumatic system. One of the benefits of our energy consultants is that they've sent me a pneumatic expert to overview the system, and I have a boiler expert coming tomorrow. In conversations with them and bouncing ideas off of them, they've pushed his schedule up by 45 days, and they're getting him here overnight tomorrow to spend tomorrow evening and Friday with me, not just in this building, but in all buildings, looking at fine-tuning our new boiler plants and reviewing pneumatic function.
Where's your compressor located?
In this building, it's in the boiler room, in the same room as the heat exchangers and the pumps, the circulated pumps.
So, you've got a pretty long run for that air.
Absolutely. That air's got a long way to travel.
Could lose a lot of it on the way.
Yep. And that's, it became very obvious, once we were servicing the units, that the stats have to be checked as well.
Yeah, that tubing isn't that thick, and, you know, with all the renovations that happened in buildings over the years, you know, you've got to imagine somebody punched a hole in one, not intentionally.
Probably some of his old copper tubing.
And we are susceptible to dry rot with the rubber tubing as well, you know, as it ages.
Yeah. But, you know, that's just one of those things you don't want to lose sight of, because you have all the hot water in the world, but if the valves aren't going open, you're not going to have any heat.
Agreed. Agreed.
Or it's going to be overheated.
Or it's going to be overheated, yeah, where they won't close.
I have one question. I guess it's for Wayne, though. If we're already at $100,000, we've allocated $100,000, things never work the way they're specked out, do we have extra funds to handle?
We have two sources. We certainly have the facilities and operations funds that we could look at and review for priority and find out, you know, how we could juggle just for the immediate future, and, you know, for any long-term plan after what Elliot's just explained. We have residual capital funds in the boiler project that we will be working on and projecting to identify, you know, is it close enough language in the proposition that we can utilize this for further repairs and/or, you know, installations of certain things here in Haviland?
Okay. I just didn't want money to be a problem to get this done. All right.
And we've talked about that pretty much at length, what our alternative funding sources will be, given that this budget, once it came in this afternoon.
Is that number a firm number or is it an estimate?
No, sir. That's an estimated budget number provided by Mr. Fink. Again, we've been in touch since last Friday, and he's been going with his foreman that did the work here, the guys that really did the preliminary assessment, as well as the guys who did install the pipe work that are closest to the projects in terms of knowledge of our facility and our infrastructure. He's telling me that by doing it for those five days, three of them are straight-time days, so we're going to be able to mitigate some costs there as well. He just wanted me to have that number to present to you today as a round-budget number.
Are any of the coils and the unit ventilators included in that?
I'm not doing unit ventilator coils, because they only take between two and four man-hours to do, and I've done six out of nine of them as matters of in-house repair. The three that we haven't changed in the last 12 months seem to be flowing properly as of this weekend's PM work.
The one space that we're in that time, after that cleaning, it's ...
Yep. They cleaned it out, tightened the belts up, and the room was making heat, and the room was in service on Monday.
Good.
Yes, sir. So, again, that's a credit to the gentleman that were here, helping us triage the system to identify the needs of the weekend work, and I thank you for that.
I think it's great that we've gotten from where we were to where we are and that we're done. I think you said two classrooms?
As of this morning, two classrooms.
Two classrooms? It's probably great, except for those two people. They're probably still not as happy as, just so we know, what classrooms?
Mr. Shaw, do you know those rooms offhand?
They're an AIS support class and a resource room class.
And I will, you know, full disclosure, we are still using space heaters to augment. I think the goal here is to make the rooms usable, you know, whether or without the space heaters. When we were down 12 to 16 rooms, even with the space heaters, we couldn't get those rooms to temperature. So, it's not perfect by any stretch of what we've done so far, but it is making the spaces usable for instruction, and we do anticipate, you know, mitigating the need for space heaters quite a bit, if not entirely, with the work that we're scheduling in the next couple of weeks.
What's that one room you mentioned that was out of service, or two rooms, AIS and ...
Yeah.
Yeah, where, is that?
They're A-12 and A-10B.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep. Oh, A-10B. Yeah, 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 yeah.
And that's also where the whole wall intake is. Well, you got up the temp, the corner, kids come in the building, once the doors open and the cold air comes in, the furnace probably not heated.
You know ...
Actually, you design something fairly moving to create a consistency.
Right. Yeah, I think, you know, this is, and again, you know, sins of the past. I've been kind of harping on this for a long time, but just for the audience's sake and people watching on TV, because I read this in the memo, that A-10B classroom down the hallway here is a door, it's a door, it basically was a mechanical room, you're saying, in the original ...
It is the main return for the two air handlers in the wing.
Yeah, so, it's a door that's got a full louver on it. I've seen that door since I was a seventh grader in this building back in 1980. Never gave it a lot of thought, but I don't think it was being used as a classroom or an instructional space back when I was here. And, you know, this is the kind of stuff that, you know, it goes, oh, we need every corner of the building, and we're stealing mechanical spaces and closets and everything else to turn into classrooms, and that's not an appropriate use for that room. And so, now, you've compromised how, not you, but the pejorative of us, have compromised, you know, how the air handling system's working in this building, because we've essentially taken a space that wasn't designed to be a classroom, turned it into a classroom, and then probably when it got a little breezy, somebody got the bright idea, let's cover up this louver, and nobody knew what the louver and the door was for.
Correct.
So, I mean, this ...
Okay. So, anybody else?
Yeah, I actually have a couple of other questions. So, and we've got Ashley queued up to come in and do the repiping, which is primarily at the large coils with the large air handlers, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Going, and I don't know what to call this, but the wing that goes down toward technology. So, they're really not doing any piping in that area. We determined that that's all copper piping?
Yep. Part of our review Friday was looking at and peeling back insulation. When we did our walkthroughs, we identified that those unit vents are serviced by copper. We found debris in copper lines, not necessarily corroded or, you know, fixed debris, but floating debris. We've also seen evidence of air binding in those lines, so that's the kind of work that's going to happen in that wing. They're going to install some bleed valves for us, some air bleed valves, to be specific, as well as flushing out the entire system, including those lines.
And Ashley's going to do that at the same time?
That's part of the scope of their work. Once they drain, they're going to have to drain the whole system down to do this work, and then, as they bring it back up, they're going to flush out those lines, because my guys, as they go through, they're always getting dirty water out of the system, and those of you that were here Friday have seen firsthand how that water looks when it first comes out of the valves.
Go ahead.
Elliot, if I remember correctly, you did indicate in one of your memos that Ashley is planning on prefabricating a lot of the piping in advance, so that they're not trying to do that at the same time to change the coils? Is that correct?
It was discussed with Mr. Fink. We talked this afternoon a couple hours ago, and he feels that he can avoid doing that on-site, but get the materials ready before they get here on the 13th. He's going to use a propress method, which does not require soldering or welding in place. It's a physical connection, a physical bonding connection between pipes, so it won't make heat, doesn't make fire. It can be done pretty quickly on-site, from what I understand. It really does expedite the process. The copper, for us, would be a little bit more on the cost side, but the payoff is that we have pipes that won't corrode and connections that can be done very quickly.
Thank you.
You know, long-term, one of the other things I was looking at or thinking about when I took a walk through the building last Thursday, and Brad Phillips' room comes to mind, you know, what do we do with, you know, some of these ceilings that are essentially, there are no ceilings? I mean, I, you know, I think I'm looking at the bottom of the roof deck, and, you know, there's got to be some value in probably getting some drop ceilings into some of these rooms, because, and it can't be any better in the summer. I've got to imagine the sun beating on that roof, you know, in the warm weather probably doesn't make it any better in that room. You know, that's just something we probably, you know, take a look at, because there's a couple of rooms in this wing, and I can't remember them all, but Brad sticks out in my mind, you know, that have a direct, they're not, there's no drop ceiling, and you're basically looking at the underneath of the roof deck. You know, there might be some insulating value on the roofing material, but who knows? But that can't help matters either, I don't think, either summer or winter.
I think also, well, if you do the ceiling, I think that would probably do the trick, but you could extend the supply vents, put a couple other branches into the space. It would help heat the space quicker.
Well, and I'll just comment on both of those ideas and say that we're adjusting our master facilities plan to incorporate future capital work for this building. I don't want to give the wrong impression here and say that the emergency repairs that we're scheduling with Ashley Mechanical in the next two weeks will solve every one of our ills in this wing. It won't. The goal here is to make the classrooms usable immediately, or as close to immediate as possible. And so, I looked at this as kind of a three-step process. What can I do with my crew today? What can I get Ashley here to do in the relative tomorrow? And, long-term, what do we need to address in this building going forward? That is inclusive of room design. It's inclusive of equipment design. For example, in A-16 in Brad Phillips' room, that unit may very well be undersized, but until I get it to work as best as it can, I don't know how undersized it is, until we do further assessments with the engineers, look at reconfiguring the space. We also have to look at how much water we're getting to this side with the existing pump system, which is original to the system, the heat exchangers in their current configuration, as well as the original pipe that's still back in that boiler room. So, a lot of the ills of the piping that we found here that we're replacing in terms of steel pipes that are corroded still exist at the front end of the system in the boiler room and will have to be addressed, even if we make them functional now. So, we are going to be adding that whole topic as one kind of bundle to say what further projects have to be done to completely update and maximize the heating system.
I think we understand that's long-term. It's not short-term.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the other part of that is, you're talking about the master plan, I think, and I was looking through it again today. I think we should list this series. This system here is so antiquated, it amazes me. I can't know how you survive this long here, but we should make this a top priority on our list.
Yeah. It's going in as a 1A, and that classification, for those that are unfamiliar, is category one is a safety item, and A is immediate priority, once to three years, because the ability to teach is indeed safety and comfort.
Yeah. This system in this wing is cobbled together, I mean, as anything I've ever seen. It's just unbelievable how they put this thing together. The other couple of, and again, I realize this is long-term. These aren't immediate solutions, but things to think about, because while I'm thinking about it, you know, some of these exterior doors, all the way down the end of the hall, a couple of exits, one all the way at the end and one by A-7, the other one back by the tech shops, A-17 area. one all the way at the end and one by A-7, the other one back by the tech shops, A-17 area. You know, we really look at putting vestibules in so that you have double doors. You got these doors that just open to the outside, so it's bitter cold, the door swings open, and you get this rush of, well, probably warm air, because always warm flows to cold. So the warm air's flying out the door instead of staying in the building. And then the system's got to work harder to recover it. You know, and the other thing too, just, and just as a point, when you're thinking about the system, how good are your mechanical drawings from when this building was built?
I have.
Do they exist?
Yes, they do exist. I can answer, those are kind of two different questions, so I'll answer them in pieces. As a point of reference, first of all, two of the three assessments we received were from engineering firms. Both engineers did speak to the antiquation of our system and both are prepared to offer alternative solutions in future design. So it's somewhat nice to know that those that came in to assess said, okay, this is what you have to do to fix it now, but going forward, we're willing to recommend X, Y, and Z alternatives that are more efficient and more effective. So just wanted to put that out there. But also, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's just I got a little off track. What was the second part of that?
Well, the point I was getting at is if you had decent prints, because.
Oh, the prints, yes.
I've got to think that there was some thought giving to, you know, because it isn't a hot air system with distribution points in various parts of the building, that there was some thought given to where the inputs are and where the air was going to flow and how it all had to work. And again, over 50-plus years, the modifications we've made to this building, chopping rooms up, you know, taking the return mechanical or the return air room and turning it into a classroom, all these things, you know, have an impact on, you know, what was originally laid out or how air was supposed to move around.
Yes.
And so, you know, you probably want to, at least to get back to or close to the design level of work before we start going, well, what are we going to do permanently? That you start looking at some of these things and make sure that, well, as an example, A-10B classroom hasn't, you know, that we haven't compromised the original design of the system just because of what we're doing with the building now.
Well, I can tell you that in doing research on all this, I found all the original blueprints, the actual blueprints from 1953, 1957, 1963. We have them in the shop, some of them are missing pages or corners. But it was interesting to see that this entire, basically this entire building, this side of the original C wing, was built in pieces. And the reason, for those that may not be familiar, the A wing was a standalone building at one time.
It's the Havlin Junior High School.
Correct.
Right.
So that's why, when we did the exterior pipes, it was only affecting the A wing. Because when the B wing was built to connect A and B, or connect A and C, it was run underground, under slab, as a connection wing. So, I mean, from an HVAC perspective, you have balancing issues because you have all these open spaces connecting to each other in a building that was built in four different periods and four different design phases. So you have the A building, which was its own building, and then B was built in half. So the library side was built originally to connect and then the administrative office side was built a couple of years thereafter.
Oh, really? They weren't built at the same time?
They were not built at the same time. So the pipe work, the electrical work, everything's kind of run in parallel, even just down this corridor. So as we look at entire system upgrades, we got to look at A and B as one continuous section and address it accordingly.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's worth noting, if this had been in an elementary school, we probably would have had it lettered correctly. Because actually, C is, was the original building.
That's right.
Yes.
A?
I think they went left to right.
If it was elementary school, I think they would have gotten it right. But the fact it was junior high and high at that point.
C came first, then A, then big in pieces.
Yeah, if, you know, the A section was the Havlin Junior High School and there was no B section, and the C section was the high school. And then finally, when the high school, the new one was built and they moved out, that's when they tied the two together and then turned the whole campus into, yeah, called it B, turned the whole campus. So I know that the original classrooms in the C wing didn't have a C prefix and the classrooms here probably didn't have an A class, a prefix, because they were separate buildings. They didn't need to be considered as one, so.
I think another key here is, on the short term, is preventative maintenance.
Yes, sir.
We have to be on top of that. And I think that was part of our problem here, that's why we clean the coils. We need to be on top of that throughout the district, actually.
Absolutely. And part of, like I said, the thermostat treatment, what we're doing at Havlin, Havlin may have been the siren that went off that draw our attention to it, but we're doing it district-wide in terms of building inspections and the work allocated. Now, Wayne's been very supportive of helping me out in terms of staffing allocations to get extra bodies in the buildings. Because I tend to only have one or two tradespeople per trade. And so what happens is, especially in this cold season, when there's an emergency, I have to pull them off of their routine work. Not an excuse by any stretch, but just an explanation of how certain things don't get done during the regular workday. And right now, as an immediate fix, we're bringing in weekend help, we're bringing in night help to get it done quickly and efficiently. But going forward, I'm examining the entire structure of our maintenance system to see what things can be bundled and put aside, focus on what prevention's going to assist us in mitigating emergency going forward into the next season.
Yeah, and to Gary's point, you know, over the years, when, you know, we had to cut budgets, you know, one of the places that always got cut was, you know, so, you know, my expectation of you is to yell up and down and scream at us when we try to, you know, hack the budget, you know, and remind us of the stuff that goes on. Because quite frankly, that hasn't happened for years. You know, Elliot, this mess is unfortunately your mess, but you didn't create it. It's been going on for years. And there's a number, you know, you know, when you, you know, for example, a unit ventilator in a classroom, the manufacturer has probably specific preventative maintenance items you're supposed to do on a periodic basis, from weekly to monthly to quarterly to yearly. And I can bet you, most of that went out the window probably 30 years ago in half of these buildings and we completely forgot about them. And it's like, okay, we cobble them and get them and try to get them running when something breaks. But, you know, nobody's changing filters, we're, you know, all these things are going on and that's how, you know, you end up in the place that we're in today. So, you know, we have to get back to, you know what, it costs money to run these facilities, folks. I'm sorry, they don't operate for free. And that's just, you know, we as a board and a community have to get used to the idea, especially when they get older, they require a lot of, you know, TLC to keep them moving and that doesn't come for free, so.
I agree 100%. And Mr. Carlander and Dr. Rajic have been very supportive in me. And when I bring these things to light and say, it has to happen now to prevent.
Well, I've sat on boards where, you know, we hacked the FNO budget to as minimal as possible. And, you know, the facilities director would kind of just hang his head and walk away and, you know, try to make do, but that's not the answer, you know. And, you know, so, you know, it's okay with me if you advocate a little harder for it.
I appreciate that.
Whether it's us sitting here or the next board with other people down the road, they need to be reminded of that, you know.
Thank you.
So I understand that, sorry Glenn, go ahead.
One question. Do we have any funds to educate our staff in things like pneumatics, controls and whatnot?
Yes, one of the budget lines that I am increasing in my request this year is the training portion for specific trades instruction. I want to get one of my two HVAC technicians, a bit of an expanded skill set, not just in maintenance, but in controls. And we are pushing through the SBGA, my professional organization of my peers throughout the state, does provide annual trainings, as does the BOSI's program. So we are looking to send our guys to more trade-specific courses to help them expand their skill sets. And one of the things that we are going to be focusing on first is that thermostat and sensor training and calibration. We're going to be doing all that in-house.
I heard we sent that out, I had a conniption.
No.
That's real basic.
I have two guys that are capable. I ordered two brand-new kits. We're going to be doing all the pneumatics in-house. And we're going to be replacing through our existing ESCO with Amaresco. We're going to be replacing the malfunctioning digital sensors as well.
Right.
That's already been discussed with them. There's a specific model that has epidemic failure. We've been working around it with manual overrides, but it's one of those enough's enough. If I'm going to do all the pneumatics, I got to get these done by the guy who owns them. And we've already been in talks with them to get them replaced as well.
That alone could save us a ton of money.
A ton of money, a ton of aggravation as well.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So I recognize that right now, your full attention is on Havlin. And it looks like you've been making good progress. What have you learned here that can be applied to the other buildings, some of which are just as old as this, although not necessarily as complex?
One of the things that came to light was the building inspection program. And I forwarded you all the memo that this morning of my staffing adjustments to check every building. Things have been coming up everywhere. I've had daily conversations with the superintendent to say, you know, while we're focused on Havlin, by the way, we found this at FDR and we're on top of it. We found this at North Park and we're on top of it. You know, it's allowed us to put eyes everywhere, quickly and timely, every morning, to get the information, not just to the superintendent, but the respective principals. The thermostat issue is district-wide, the sensor issue is district-wide. My boiler expert that's coming tomorrow is going to look at this building and FDR first, but plans to tour all of our buildings, not just the new plants, but the old ones as well, to see operationally what we can do to do better, to maintain the life of our equipment, but also to provide a better service to our community.
The, some of the discoveries that you've made on the distribution systems here at Havlin, do they also apply to Hyde Park Elementary, Violet Avenue? Given, and I'm asking about them specifically because they're from the same era.
Violet Avenue's rather unique and it's the only building that has a, it's the more simplistic of the control systems. And we did put a brand-new, state-of-the-art boiler, but the thermostat is what they call a one-pipe system. It does not allow for setback or global reduction of temperature. And so it's crucial to keep the thermostats operational because that's really your only point of control in each room. We can modulate how the boilers fire to bring up the pressure or bring down the pressure in the whole building. But it did bring us to realize just how important those control devices are in that building. Again, just to reiterate, this wing of this building is a hydronic system. The only other building that has a hydronic system, meaning a hot water system, is Netherwood Elementary. And we haven't had any of these type of issues there. So on the hot water side, we haven't seen it anywhere else. As far as age of building and infrastructure, the controls, the thermostats, the air lines, that's the kind of thing that we're finding out in all the buildings. I mean, to be honest, whether it was built in 1939 or 1965, it's still old and needs attention. And when stuff gets to a certain age, whether it's 30, 50, or 70 years old, it needs to be well-maintained. Especially when you're dealing with rubber, plastic hoses, copper pipes that can age and corrode over time.
Okay. Another question I have is, how much instrumentation do you have on room temperatures? And where I'm going here is that going forward, you know, from a high level, it would be nice if you could assign a heat quality to a building. And I'm thinking from, sorry, I'm from a software background. So, you know, if I were designing control software, then I would want to be able to assign either some sort of numeric overall grade saying, that says, you know, makes a statement that 95% of the building is within temperature range. Do we have any sort of ability to summarize?
We do through our energy management system. Yesterday, I had a meeting with our Amaresco rep. It was kind of illuminating to see how the Amaresco trends reflect what we've noticed in-house, what we've noticed with synergistics, input monitoring of our temperature settings and consumption numbers. They, according to them, they tell us that approximately 54% of our spaces are within temperature range. And actually, the majority of what's not in their recommended range are in higher ranges. Now, that's district-wide, not necessarily reflective of this building where we're having these concerns. But it is to say that those extrapolations are coming from sensor data, sensors that may not be properly calibrated. So it brings us back to the whole, let's make sure what we're measuring is being measured correctly. As part of my staff redeployment, I gave everybody temperature-measuring equipment so that they can check temperatures in every room and every building. I'm comfortable to say that by 5:30 AM every day, I can find out the temperature of any classroom in this district and transfer that information to the superintendent and the building principal. So we're kind of boots-on-the-ground, making up for or compensating for the sensor issues. But my goal is by the end of this heating season to have that resolved and go into next year and know that when I get that report from Amaresco saying, you know, 60 or 70, or hopefully 80 or 90% of my rooms are within range, that that is legitimate data coming from clean and calibrated source material.
Okay, so not only are you improving the heating systems themselves, but your, one of your goals is to have better sensing so that if we start bumping into heating system problems next year, then we'll at least have accurate information.
Right, absolutely. I mean, right now, I have a temperature sensor in a room that tells me that the room is 68 degrees or 70 degrees. And so the equipment's not calling for heat in that space. I go into the room and I measure the temperature myself with a manual device and it's 64 degrees. And it's below federal regulations for instruction. So that four or five degrees may not be a big deal in the grand scheme of numbers, but it's the difference between I can have class in this room or I can't. And I can't afford to have that margin of error run rampant through the district for another season. So we're going to mitigate that as soon as possible.
Is it part of a maintenance program that you check the sensors and calibrate at the beginning of a school year?
Well, ideally, it's something that you want to do in the summer. You do all your heating plant preventative maintenance in the summer months while the systems are shut down so you can change your steam traps, work on thermostats. You know, this being the end of my first calendar year with the district, I'm still kind of fine-tuning how those summer months look. And going into my now second summer, it is a huge priority of mine to make sure that preventative maintenance items like this are addressed in advance and not just, oh my God, it's the weekend, I got to get it done by next week because it's cold out. So moving into next year, I'm going to be doing a lot of steam trap work in the summer, I'm going to be doing a lot of thermostat work, all the things that control our heating plants. It's kind of a sequential process. Can I make heat with the equipment I have? Right now, it's yes and no, and I'm trying to make it all yes. Once I can physically make heat, can I control and properly dictate how that heat comes up and where it goes? And that's the B part of that control issue.
Sure. Yeah, my point here is that, and as Kevin mentioned several times, the system's been neglected for a long time. So right now, job number one is to make the system work.
No.
Number two is to bring the system up to spec and make sure that we can control it and that we don't have any recurrences.
Steve, I think job one is to get someone trained to the point where they're able to do that. Right now, from what I'm understanding, we don't have people who can do step one.
And what it is, is we have one, two guys that have the skill set to do it, but they're the ones that are making sure that the boilers are staying hot and that pipe that blows out gets replaced and that bad coil gets swapped out. And so their times, traditionally since I've been here, have been consumed by those putting out fires.
But if they can't even calibrate the thermostat, then they don't, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, and that's why we're getting them the equipment and the training so that that stays in-house.
Right, we have to do that before we can do the rest of it.
Yep, I've already put the order in for the equipment to make that happen.
It's not only the calibration, but it's, you should have supply on stats to back up stuff.
Agreed.
Because if you do have a bad stat and you can't get to it, at least you can replace the stat and recalibrate later.
That's quick.
Yep, and one of the things that I've been doing as a matter of practice before this whole thing kind of came to a head is fine-tuning our inventory and supply management throughout the FNO department, district-wide, not just at the warehouse, but in every building. Since I came to the district, we've been implementing inventory controls that allow us to know exactly what's in-house. And you've heard me speak previously about minimizing windshield time and maximizing wrench time in terms of keeping guys turning wrenches and turning screws and not have them scrambling, looking for stuff. So thermostats and related materials, steam trap parts, valve fittings, pipe work, the things that I know I go through regularly, I've been able to start to stockpile. And by the end of this school year, when I sit with Wayne and do my end-of-year numbers, we're going to talk about how much I've been able to cut down the volume of invoices while still maintaining the volume of inventory. By planning work in advance, stocking up on what we need to grab it off the shelf and go and minimize downtime of rooms and spaces.
One thing I just wanted, Mr. Mittermeyer had a line of questioning, if you will, about, and I kind of sense where you're going with it and having better control and building data and understanding what spaces are. But I think it's important for everybody to realize that the thermostats that we're talking about, one thermostat services multiple classrooms. So even though you may have a, you know, you could be satisfied in one room that actually has a thermostat, you could have two or, you know, you could have multiple other spaces that aren't satisfied because of, could be air obstruction, could be flow, could be any number of things. So just, just so that there's, understand there's not a correlation of a satisfied thermostat means a satisfied room. It's, you know, it's.
In this building.
I mean, if you were to build a school today, you would. You'd have, every room would have a thermostat. This, you know, at the time this was built, you did it by zone, similar to the way you would have it in your house where you might have a thermostat per floor. You probably have four or five classrooms on a thermostat.
I was going to say, in this building, we average four to six rooms by stat control.
Yeah.
Yeah, my question wasn't so much about thermostat or control, it was information, remote, accurate remote information.
Right, and my point is that that information you're getting back is of that particular room may not relate to the other four or five rooms around it that don't have any sensor in it.
So that is an important piece of information because I was assuming from the start that every room had a sensor.
No, no.
That's incorrect. And that's part of why we're doing our checks because if you have six unit ventilators running off of one stat in one room, a failure on a motor in one room could increase or decrease the temperature by 10 degrees. And the thermostat that controls that space not only wouldn't modulate the control of that device, but wouldn't report back to us that there is an issue. And that's part of why the building inspections became crucial, that man in the building, man or woman, sorry, in the building to put eyes in every space. And I can again say with confidence that by 5:30 AM, I know what's going on in the entire district. That's something that I haven't been able to say before. And if there's any positive that came out of this whole situation is that getting our hands around what we need to know, when we need to know it, and being able to share that appropriately and in a timely fashion has been a huge positive that came out of this experience.
You know, I think one thing that's also worth noting, or more so for maybe the community to understand, this building, or this section of the building, and I don't know when it was done, but going down that technology wing, they abandoned the original heating system that was in this building. I mean, it's the most absurd system I've ever seen where you're pumping air up through a cavity between two brick walls, essentially, to provide. I mean, it's got to be cold before it gets there. I mean, you take a brick wall without insulation and your heat is just on the, the hot air is just on the other side of the wall. You'd be shot for trying to do something like that today. But, so somewhere. the wall. You'd be shot for trying to do something like that today. But, so somewhere along the way, and not recently, I mean, those univents have got to be twenty, twenty-five, thirty years old.
At least twenty years old, yeah.
Yeah. When I was a student here, they weren't there. It was the old system. But because they've come in since, because it wasn't drop ceilings in those classrooms when I was here.
Okay.
The original old lights and the...
So, the point is somewhere along the way, somebody recognized that, you know what, this system just doesn't work. They probably had enough money to say, okay, we can do this much and get it, and get it working and...
Well, with a redesign, hopefully we'll do the same. Unit ventilators need space, get rid of the air handlers.
But that's not what we're doing today. I think what's clear, it's clear to, for everybody to understand, we're just getting the systems that are here back up to functioning as well as they possibly can.
Yeah. The wing that runs down this way, the long way of this building, of course, camera people probably don't know what I'm pointing to, but the main part of this wing was, is that way. I mean, you get down on the corner, seven, eight, nine, ten, eight, seven, eight, nine, ten, it's just what you described. It's still the cavity between the brick walls.
All the way going down through there, all those classrooms.
That's all it is. Right. Yeah. Yeah. And I think probably what they did was they recognized that, whoa, that other wing going towards technologies faces north and it's cold all the time. Oh, this is the quick fix. And, you know, the front of this building gets some sun. And, you know, when I was going through with Mr. Shaw the other day, you know, they weren't great, but they were somewhat bearable. And I realized, well, that's because the sun's shining. Get on the north side, eight, nine, and eight, ten classrooms, and you're freezing because the classrooms are facing north and they're not getting the sun all day. So...
Actually, Kevin, I think we found a wad of paper that had your name on it, you know, that you had thrown down in that ductwork that long ago.
Some test or something I shoved down in the vent.
Yeah. You have obstructed air for many years.
And your detention record.
C minus on it. Well, actually, I don't know who it was written to. What was her name, Andrea?
Other, any more comments?
I just, and I don't, you know, we're going through a technology plan now too, to expand and control the internet service and bandwidth and stuff like that. Has anybody looked at whether or not there'd be some benefit of getting input into that plan to allow you with drops, to allow you in the future to maybe automate some of this information?
Yes, sir. We have discussed with the cabling company the opportunities that may be available to us to expand the infrastructure to the boiler rooms, to get faster connections for our boiler controls, which is where the headends are that controls all of the rest of the systems. We've also been entertaining, upgrading the control systems themselves. It is a rather, a rather expensive endeavor. If, and again, this is a big if, if there's appropriate funding left in the capital project that doesn't need to be allocated to these emergency repairs, we're prepared to explore the options of using some of those funds to maybe expand and improve on our control systems to get them stronger, not just in terms of the scope of what we can control, but how we can report data, how we can track and trend data. For example, I can only go back two days with temperature data right now with our existing system. With an upgraded system, I could trend it up to a year. So, if somebody says that this room is traditionally cold every day at 6:00 a.m., if Mr. Shaw calls me and says, well, my office is always cold at 6:00 o'clock, not that he ever would, because he's not the type to complain, but just as an example, I can look back and say that twenty-five out of the last forty-five days, he's absolutely right, where I can't do that with the current system. So, we have explored it and we do have options in front of us. All of that is contingent on how much we have to spend to make the rooms usable and serviceable right now.
And the other comment I'd make is I can't believe by now that we don't have available to us wireless thermostat technology.
It's...
Which would allow us to take, cover the classrooms that currently do not have thermostats with some kind of...
A lot of the current technology is radio frequency-based. And in a building of this design, it's difficult to get those signals through the walls. The internet-based stuff is still kind of fledgling in its existence, and it's not yet cost-effective to my knowledge. But, yeah, it's a great technology. Unfortunately, some of our buildings were built so well and so tight that it's hard to pass those radio signals from one end of the structure to the other.
So, more internet-type of activity would be better.
There, it would be when we get there. We're not there yet in terms of the technology.
Yeah. Dan, right now, most of it's done with a twisted shielded pair so that things like motor interference, radios, telephones don't interfere with you. I mean, you can get situations where every time teacher A picks up her phone, it turns on the thermostat in room B with the, without the twisted shielded pair. So, it's really easy to run.
Yeah. You know, I'm living in a house that was built about the same time. It was built in the late 50s. And I would, what I've noticed in the trending things is there, some of the internal things that fail in a house now, the response I get from the repair people is I can't repair the unit. I've got to replace it because they no longer make repair parts for it.
Yep.
You know, so I can see, you know, with, in a huge complex like that, that's got to be an issue also.
It has been. And that's part of the, what led us to this researching of the control system is that certain components are reaching their end-ofusable, serviceable life, which just means they're not going to make parts for it anymore. And so, we're doing a bit of a cost analysis to say, okay, well, it's going to cost us a lot more to replace it, but going forward, we'll get twenty years of service out of it versus the ten years we have left on the ESCO.
It's either that or hire an aging-out German toolmaker to hand carve up all the pieces you need.
Sometimes we have to have parts machined, yes.
Have you and Forrest had conversations about synergy between the control systems and the technology plan?
We have. Right now, there've been some issues that came up with the district-wide technology upgrade controls, just in terms of how they interface the in-house network with the external. You know, and I'm going to try to be as basic as possible in this explanation. Depending on how the new network is configured, will dictate how our outside service vendors can enter our network and service our equipment remotely on a software side. So, Forrest and I have had a lot of dialogue, not only on the tech project itself, but how it affects my world and most of the effect to my equipment is through that EMS interface.
Good. The other thing I'd like to point out with wireless devices is that getting connected to the hardwired network is one reason why you would insert or install wireless. However, the other issue that you always run into is powering the darn things. So, wireless is usually not necessarily a panacea.
I think it's also worth noting, when you're talking about changing, upgrading the controls in this building, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, this is not, this isn't, you know, this isn't a hundred thousand dollars. This is, you know, several hundred thousands of dollars. So, you know, it's a big project and something. And actually, the cabling side of it is one of the smallest elements of it. I mean, you're talking about control valves, sensors, headends.
It's all the guts that got to be replaced too.
Yeah. So, just to put it in context, don't anybody think that this is something that we're going to move toward lightly, quickly, or easily?
What we're looking to do in realistic terms of what we're exploring is intermediate devices that can be reprogrammed for future systems. So, you know, we have an old R2 box. We're looking at the AX box. They have boxes that can speak R2 and AX language, just so that everybody understands. We're looking at how we can do this in steps and phases, where needed first, where optimal second, and then as a comprehensive project, third.
Okay. If I could just summarize the pertinent facts that probably the community, parents, staff might want to know is that currently, there's only two rooms that are not up to spec and usable.
As of today, yes.
There will be a work done, a considerable amount of work done between February 13th and 17th at the five-day span while there's nobody here. And at February 18th or thereabouts, we expect all rooms to be usable, and we should be able to get through the rest of the winter months.
That's our hope. We're going to be, we have two major mechanical rooms and the south cafeteria that are going to be worked on in that five-day window.
I just didn't want that to get lost in all the technical. So, thank you very much, Elliot.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like a motion to enter public participation.
So moved?
Is there any discussion?
It's way over there.
All those in favor? We're now in public participation. Anybody who would like to address the board, please step to the mic. You have up to three minutes. Although, as I've said many times, I won't hold you exactly to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Bobby Goodman. Fortunately or unfortunately, I have a student in all three buildings that had heating problems last week. I'm glad to hear about all the effort that's going into Havlin, and that we're down to two classrooms, but really only some of those classrooms are usable because of space heaters, not because everything's been fixed. So, I want to just make, I thought I heard that. I just thought that should be clear to the TV public too. Now, at FDR, I was wondering if we could get an update up there because two of my son's classes were both moved last week still due to heating problems, a tech class and a history class. So, I didn't know if we had any kind of update on what's going on at FDR because I know everybody keeps saying FDR is working perfectly fine, but it's really not.
We haven't said that.
And the complaints that I hear from most of the kids are because they're in the school cafeteria after school. And I know that with the heating thing, we're shutting everything down lower, but they do sit in the cafeterias from two to three to do whatever until their practices start. And they said there isn't any heat in the cafeterias while they're sitting in there. So, those are just my concerns. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to?
Hi. My name is Lori Wajda, and I have four children in the High Park District. Three have gone through North Park Elementary, and one attends there now. And I just have an issue that I think is a safety issue at North Park. And I wrote a letter to the board this morning, and I would just like to address that. I heard there was a meeting tonight, so I figured I'd come and address this today. I'm just going to read it because I'm really bad at speaking. "To the High Park School Board, my child is a student at North Park Elementary. I pick him up early. As of late, I have been picking him up at 3:00 p.m. rather than at dismissal. As the last time I went at regular dismissal time, I stood in the cold in ten-degree weather for fifteen minutes before I was allowed in the building. Let me explain. When I arrived at North Park, there was a line at the side of the building standing in front of the side door. Mind you, not at the front door where parents have to be buzzed in for a safety precaution. At the side door where anyone is let in as long as they are in line. No ID is checked when parents are permitted into the building. Wasn't this the reason for the costly system at the front door which was paid for with the taxpayers' money who stand in the cold? To check IDs of anyone permitted access to our children? Anyone can stand in line and be permitted into North Park Elementary. In light of the shootings all around the country in schools, and especially that of Sandy Hook just a little over one year ago, this system concerns me. Is there a valid reason not to use the, again, I reiterate, costly buzzer at the front of the building where personnel and children can be assured that every single person who walks into the building is buzzed in by the front desk? I think not. I was in the school office yesterday picking up my son at 3:00 p.m. when I heard the office woman instruct someone, obviously new to the system, that the door is opened at 3:10. She did not instruct her to take IDs. She did not instruct her to check anyone at the door. She was not instructed to even stay at the door in case someone may look suspicious. This alarmed me as well. Again, I reiterate, this costly buzzer system was put in place to protect our children. Why are people being randomly let into the building? Surely, as there are many, there would be some buzz in the lobby of parents picking up their children. But do we really want to put the children and the school at risk by not using the system that was put there for safety to begin with? I have spoken with parents at every other elementary school in High Park. All have to be buzzed in order, in order to enter the buildings for any reason. Is there a reason that North Park they do not? Is there a reason to make parents who pay for the salaries of the personnel in the school stand outside in single-digit temperatures? Or is that just because they can? I invite anyone on the board to come out and stand with parents at North Park to see how this system works. Wear your underarmour. You'll need it. Today, I dropped off my son at the door. When I got to North Park, there were four buses, all parked in the bus loop at several various, various places. I could get through. I went around them, which I did, because the buses had already dropped off. There was no reason I should not be able to drop my son off at the front door of his own school. However, there was little room, and if an emergency vehicle had to get through, they might not have had such an easy time of it. This may be seen as a safety issue as well. What exactly is going on at North Park? Now, I ask you, aren't there rules in place district-wide to stop this nonsense? Or is the North Park School able to make up their own, and I use this tense, as is the people inside making them up, rules as they go along? I find huge issues with the tactics in place. As I said, I don't stand in line in single-digit weather anymore. I pick up my son at three. I refuse to be subject to extreme weather, thunderstorms, et cetera, to pick up my own child. However, the way it is now is a huge safety issue just to let random people stand in line and get in with no questions asked at the door. There's no reason for it, and I see it as a safety issue for all concerned. There was, again, I reiterate, a costly system put in place for a reason. Let's use and protect our children as it was intended to do so in the first place. District-wide rules need to be put in place here and enforced. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Lori, before you sit down, I read your email today, so I got a clarifying question. You described the side door. Which door is that at North Park? Just so I can picture that.
Well, if you're facing north, if you're facing the school, it's the one on the left side.
Okay.
So, you have to go all the way around the corner.
At the end of the short hallway, past the office.
And there's a huge tank that the parents line up.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of doors, so I was just trying to picture which one. Okay, thanks.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Hello. I am Ted Frezak. I teach here in the building. The process of trying to put a Band-Aid on what's happening here, I think it's, you couldn't, it couldn't be any better than what you guys are doing right now. And number two, I think that I want to thank Mr. Shaw, being a new principal in here, because these problems have been here forever. They just didn't happen, you know, over the summertime. There's been heating issues in this building forever. But he's really brought it to everybody's attention, and now, you know, they're being addressed. The third point is that it appears like everyone sitting here is assuming that, you know, by training some people and calibrating controls and replacing some air lines and, you know, doing some coils and blowing it out and putting in some new sensors, that everything is going to be hunky-dory. It isn't, you know. And the only reason why they're able to make it work right now is they've closed off all the fresh air in the building. And as you know, when you put a bunch of people in the room, the carbon dioxide levels go up really high. And you get kids that are very lethargic. And if you look at all the studies, you don't get kids learning very well when they're in that type of environment. So, the only reason why the systems are working, if you walk around the outside of the building, all the fresh air is closed off right now, everything. So, we can keep the temperature up, but as soon as you open them all up, not going to work. You'll be freezing coils again. You know, you won't be able to bring the proper amount of fresh air into the building. The reason why I'm just mentioning this, there's no way you can fix the system you have here now and make it legal. It's not legal. You have to provide fresh air for every kid that comes in this building, twenty CFM per person per hour. It's not being done. It's not right the way it is right now. So, don't sit here thinking that, you know, over the course of two or three years, we can keep improving it. If you had an old car, and it was at this point, you wouldn't keep putting money into it. You would get rid of it and buy a new one because it just makes sense. It really needs a new system. Someone needs to deal with the fresh air issue. You know, they got to have carbon dioxide sensors in the room. You get a bunch of kids in my room now. Thank God I have a class, because they raise the temperature about five degrees when they're in my room. When they leave, I'm cold again, you know. So, I want them to come back. But the only reason why, but if you had that set up properly, you would have to bring in a lot of fresh air because now you have a lot of people in there breathing the oxygen out of the room. I just wanted to make that comment. Don't think you can fix the system you have here. You really need to replace it. And you really got to look at the fresh air because right now, it's closed up to a disdrom. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Mr., was it Frezak? Did I say that right? You're a hundred percent right. And I know that. I mean, this is what I do.
We need the vote to close.
Every fresh air intake is blocked. I saw it myself. Once we get pipes that can deliver hot water, perhaps we can begin opening them.
Glenn, let us close.
We didn't do it? Sorry, I jumped the gun.
Yeah, yeah. All those in favor?
Been on the roof all day. I'm a little tired.
Go get it.
All right. So, we can only, we can't fix it completely right now. We got to do what we got to do to get heat. I don't, I'm not confident that even with all the coils working a hundred percent, that once we open up the outside air, we'll be okay. Not in a thirty-year cold snap anyway, which was what we're in. But you're right. Down the line, it's got to be redone, a hundred percent.
No.
Just as part of that, and I think Ellie might be able to answer this, with temperatures like this outside those, typically, those dampers will shut closed anyway. There's probes on the dampers. If temperature goes down to a certain point, the dampers will stay closed so you don't freeze the coils. So, at this point, the last couple of weeks, in most cases, those dampers probably would be closed.
These are just holes.
Oh, they're not operational. Have to put that on the list too, I guess.
They're simply holes.
Well, and that's, yeah, to Ted's... Well, and that's, yeah, to Ted's point that, you know, we don't want to, don't want to miss that in any of the buildings, because, you know, and that's something I used to harp on, too. So the preventative maintenance also includes the unit ventilators in the classrooms that have them. And we buttoned them, I remember in the 70s as a kid at North Park, they buttoned them up, energy conservation, covered them right over, so there was no exchange with the outside air. Well, that defeated the purpose of why, that, of course, I didn't know that when I was 10 years old, but that's how that building was designed, and that's how you're supposed to exchange the fresh air. That's in classrooms that have unit ventilators. And then, you know, you go through a lot of the hallways in a lot of these buildings, and this one, I don't think so as much, but a lot of the newer buildings have the roof fans in the hallways. And they've got to be kept running, because that's what they're doing. They're moving air out of the building to bring more air in, just for the reasons described. So, you know, yes, we can't lose sight of that ball, because that is part of the entire package as well. But thanks for reminding us.
I'm curious if Mr. Garcia could comment on the air exchange rate in the building and plans to address that?
Let me just make a quick point on the outside air. Considering what's going on now, and we're blocking the vents, to get fresh air in a room, you could crack a window. You know, if you've got an overloaded room and it feels uncomfortable, crack a window line, that'll suffice until we get the other resolved.
Just as a point of reference on that topic, we have not had any issues, nor shutdowns, nor challenges with our exhaust system. We do actively exhaust air out of every one of our school buildings, and the vast majority, if not all of them, are negatively charged, which means that there's more air going out than coming in.
Which is a problem.
So we're not, well, it's a heat issue, but we're sucking in external air through the doors, through the windows, through all the passages from the outside. So there is turnover of air, obviously not to the design point of the original intent of the system. And that's, given certain temperatures, the louvers are meant to close all the way. And some of the ones that are blocked are blocked because the louvers are damaged or malfunctioning or missing.
Or never did exist.
Never did exist on the old air handlers. But in certain specific cases where there's bleed-through of gaps in insulation or the louvers that would otherwise be automatically closed, we supplement that by blocking them up, because those devices are at various stages of disrepair. So it's, some places it's a temporary fix, some places it's a permanent fix, but we're exhausting air out of every single building, including this one, to get some air turnover, regardless of the air handling equipment themselves.
Elliot, do you monitor the effectiveness of that exhausting as far as carbon dioxide concentration?
I don't have sensors on the actual parts-per-million of the carbon dioxide, but we do, as part of our preventative maintenance and routine maintenance, inspect the motors and the belts to make sure that they are working and functioning properly.
Elliot, while you're up there, you want to address the FDR question?
Yeah, before Elliot responds, I do want to just clarify one thing, that we haven't stated that there are no problems at FDR. I know when it first started, Barb sent out a school messenger to all parents. Most recently, I spent, sent out a letter acknowledging that we still had some issues at FDR. So the specifics are that, yes, we have continued to have sporadic isolated problems at FDR. As soon as they're brought to, as soon as we know them, we try not to put students in those classes. I just wanted to clarify that we haven't been saying that everything's excellent at FDR. We've been trying to acknowledge it and communicate very specifically about what our status is there and how we're addressing it. So I do know that, you know, we still had a couple of classrooms that were relocated. I visited one classroom that was meeting in the library, because, you know, the room was too cold and we still had a quarrel in a tech room. So those are the isolated incidents that we're working on on a daily basis. I do receive a phone call from Elliot personally every single morning at 6:00 AM and get a status of every building in the district. So I just wanted to make sure we know what our communication is and what we're working on. So I don't know if there's more rooms still at FDR that...
We've had two rooms earlier this week, one room in the last couple of days, and this morning, it wasn't even an issue in that room, approaching appropriate temperatures by the 6:00 AM phone call that Dr. Frazek and I share. There have been mechanical issues, and it's difficult at a time when you have systemic failures in one building to then turn around and say that that's not the problem somewhere else. And FDR's been plagued with isolated issues throughout this heating season. And I promise you, it's happening everywhere. Buildings are having isolated failures because of this extreme cold. We're doing the best we can to stay ahead of it. There are some adjustments that we're hoping to make with our expert in district tomorrow that is flying in tomorrow night and spending tomorrow evening and Friday all day with us. And he's, his time's being split here and at FDR, because, believe it or not, in this building, we don't have a boiler problem. Our problem is after the boilers. It's in the wings themselves. At FDR, some of our issues do stem from basic boiler configurations, and addressing them at their heart and at their core is going to help mitigate a lot of those issues going forward, whereas our guys have just been attacking it every morning. But with our updated communication, we've been staffing earlier, getting them ready, even if there is a hiccup early in the day, we're able to confidently measure and communicate that those rooms are usable by the 7:00 hour when students are...
Yeah, and as Ted said, in some of our buildings, there have been heating issues in particular rooms for a long period of time. So there were some rooms, as you reported to me, as well as Barbara Marine, the high school principal, there were some rooms that, you know, for years, were always the traditionally cold rooms. And by addressing some of these problems that bubbled up to the surface recently, we've been able to fix rooms that have always been traditionally cold. So there were some positive benefits of, if you will, if you want to look at it as a positive, but there are rooms where the teachers had reported that, you know, they were the, they were the cold rooms all winter wrong, long. In your own houses, you have a room typically that's colder than others. Well, by addressing some of these issues, we've actually put in a permanent fix for some of the FDR rooms, too. So just as an aside.
All right. Thank you, Elliot. In regards to the North Park Elementary pickup?
Yeah, we can revisit that. We did just receive your letter. This has come up in the past. I have gone over to observe the dismissal process. I also have observed the dismissal process in all the buildings. We will, I will take a look at this again. I just wanted to also say that we don't, don't get me wrong, we don't force parents to wait outside. The doors, the system there, and I'm not making a comment on that at this point, but the system there is, it is known that the doors for parent entry that all funnel in through a hallway are opened at a particular time. Once those doors are open, people can come through, come into the building. It is an option for a parent to wait in their heated car until those doors are open. There's enough space so that if parents wanted to wait in their heated car, they could get out of their car at that specified time, and they would be permitted into the building. So again, you know, I will revisit this, but no one is forced to wait outside in the cold. You can wait until the door opens and then enter the building.
Well, personally, I'm troubled about the security aspects. And I'm, in general, I don't know, when I was a parent, if I was going to pick my kid up early, it was because I had a specific reason that I had to get somewhere. And usually, I'd pick them up early so that I didn't get caught in the bus dismissal. So waiting in a car in a parking lot quite far away from the door until the door opens seems like not a very good system, to me, anyway. So I'm not sure what you can do about, but it certainly seems to me that they should be going through the buzzer door in the front thing. And if they do that, I don't see why they couldn't be buzzed in early and stay in either the cafeteria or the gym until early release and then leave. I don't see why that's a problem.
Yeah, it's, I'll just, right, and that's what we will revisit. And just to clarify, that it's not for early pickup. What, I think Mrs. Wajda is coming early now because of the whole issue, but the parents are not coming for early. They're coming for normal dismissal.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, they're there at regular, so in every building, we have parents who choose to pick up their children versus putting them on the bus. And...
But there's usually a reason, like they have to get to function.
No, we have, no, we have parents who pick up their children every single day. And I will say that the volume, one of the reasons why there is a difference in how North Park handles it is that there's a very high volume of parents who pick their children up every day by choice, rather than sending them on the bus, every single day. We have a list of, don't quote me, but I think it's about 35 parents who come every single day. When you go to Netherwood or some of the other schools, it's different when there are fewer parents who need to get into the building as we're dismissing the children out of the building. So we will revisit this from a safety perspective and a, you know, from every perspective, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. I, one other point I just thought of is that there are more students at North Park Elementary. The bus routes perhaps are much longer, and therefore, you have more people picking your kids up, because it's an unacceptable amount of time before the kids make it home. And if that is the case, then we should look into that also.
Right, we should explore that, if, how, what those timelines are for, yeah.
Doug, when you say that the bus routes are much longer...
I'm not saying they are. I'm speculating that they may.
Okay. Well, you know, the evidence that we saw when we looked at the transportation study, I think that was just last summer, talked about the limitations in the range of times that kids would spend on the bus, and that the goal of the Transportation Department was to have kids on the bus no more than 45 minutes. Now, I don't...
45 minutes is a long time for an elementary school child.
I don't disagree, but my point is that...
Yeah, let's just, let's be realistic. It's not having, I don't think has anything to do with Hyde Park joining forces, because if you took a lot of the Hyde Park runs and just pulled out of North Park and buzzed over to where they live, the Village or Statsburg or wherever, that, you know, it's an express run, you start dropping kids. But again, I don't know how the bus routes are, but I suspect you've got kids that have been at North Park and would have been at North Park all along, that live out in the far reaches of Clinton and Netherwood, the far reaches of Salt Point, that have a long bus route and always have. It's just the nature of where they live versus where the building is, so. It's not new to the Hyde Park Elementary merger.
Oh, absolutely not.
But the other, you know, the other question I had is, was my recollection that we were going to do some work to standardize the procedures at the elementary schools. So I guess one question is, what's the status of that work?
And it depends on what you mean by standardizing. So I can give a report on that. Again, I don't want to start speaking off the cuff, knowing that that email came in this morning, so I would want to make sure my, you know, information is accurate and up to date.
Yeah, I'm not asking for an immediate answer. The other issue that I caught in Mrs., I don't want to mispronounce any...
Wajda.
Wajda. The discourse was about emergency vehicles and emergency vehicle access during the bus drop-off period. And I'm not an expert by any means, but it seems reasonable that at any school building in the morning, when the buses are dropping kids off, emergency vehicle access might be limited. But I would be curious to hear a comment from our administration on that point.
At that building, as in every school building in New York State, there is a safety committee or a safety team in that building. And I would suggest that we just refer this and ask between, and I'm sure the principal of that building is on that safety team, would be, let them take a look at the comments that were made, and I think that they could probably address it. I think that, you know, that there's reasons, there's, with every building, and the way that people flow in and out of a building and vehicles flow around the building, there's some uniqueness in it. It's difficult to standardize and say, this is the way we're going to do it at every building in the district. It just doesn't happen that way. It's going to have some unique elements to it. I would expect that it's been looked at, there was a process put in place, processes changed, if somebody isn't watching it, if somebody's not, you know, if there isn't somebody leading the fight to make sure that it's done the same way, that it was identified. So I think that the best thing would be just to refer back to the building and ask them, and perhaps either Greer, or maybe, maybe better yet, someone from the building could come and address some of these issues and make recommendations or suggestions as to what needs to be done and what can be done. While I've got the mic, I just wanted to address a little bit of Ted's comments about the indoor air quality. You made a comment, you said that this building was closed up tight as a drum. I wish this building could be closed up as tight as a drum. There is so much air infiltration around this building, and, you know, I know that it'd be a great tech experiment to try closing, you know, sealing off a door in a classroom and either pull a vacuum on it or pressurize it and see how much of a challenge you are. It's, I don't think it would be that difficult to move all the air through it that you need to. And what I might suggest, Bosie's provides a service, they can come in and do some air sampling. I mean, if we want to do that in the interim, let them come in and do some air samples just to see what we're looking at, you know, in a loaded classroom or a busy space and get a sense. My guess is, we're probably going to be better than you think. But, you know, I appreciate, as we were walking around, we realized every outside air intake, and I don't think it just, it didn't just get blocked up, I think, as a result of this heating problem. I mean, some of them are pieces of rigid styrofoam where the UV has dissolved the outer layer of the RMAX that was put over it, so.
Well, I think it happened hearing stories from people that have been here for a while. At one time, they had to cut in, like in my room, there was just a piece of carbon nanites, as you know, going up through the roof, and it just dropping cold air. When I sat on my desk, it was, you know, zero-degree air dropping directly on my head. It had to cover it up, pretty sick. I mean, you would literally, it was that cold.
Yeah.
And in another classroom, the same way. And the rooms down that north corridor in the A Wing, the outside louver is just cut through the brick, it's just got aluminum louver on it. The heating coil is directly behind it. They have to close them up, because there are freezing coils. And they have to run the heat all, you know, so you're not getting, what I meant tight as a drum, was every louver that was providing fresh air is not closed.
I'm going to have to ask that, we move on. This isn't a dialogue. I let it go, I let it go because this is a special meeting, but I'd like to keep the format the way, the way we always do it.
And one last comment is, I don't think anybody sitting at this table thinks that the work that's going to be done within the next month is the end result. I mean, we've got a much bigger project here, and I just hope that the community is prepared to support what's going to be necessary in the future.
Okay. I'd like to move on to 6.1, out-of-town athletic trips. This is a kind of a placeholder for the trips that may occur. The reason it's on the agenda tonight is that we forgot to do it in previous meeting, and there is a trip scheduled for next week, so we need to handle this. So can I have a motion for 6.1, please?
So moved.
As described in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose. Motion carried. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? We're now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you for coming, yeah.